For the committee of the whole meeting, I will start with a roll call. I'm going to pass over to Jennifer to introduce herself and we'll go around the room this way.
Jennifer Gossick, City Clerk.
Paul Volart, Public Works Superintendent.
Ryan Austin, District One.
Dean Veneman, District Two.
Justin Pless, District Three.
Jeff Penscover, District Four.
Matt Zachar, Mayor.
Jay Caton, District Five.
Dennis Pollak, District Six.
Michael Timm, District Seven.
Madeline Palmquist, District Eight.
Ben Goodrow, Fair Chief.
Tim Nusorsi, Finance Director.
Thank you. Item two is called to order, so that leaves us at calling to order at 6:01 PM. Item three on the agenda is our mission, vision, and values. And with the packet, we have the survey results. I'm going to ask Mayor Zachar to provide us a little bit of background results and then lead us into the next.
Yeah, so we passed this out. Again, I give a ton of credit to Emily Kent for doing a lot of the work behind the scenes to do that with Joe. And Joe from WRCM, Justin from GIS System helped a lot. So a lot of, lot of effort went into it, starting way back when, when we asked the department heads their input and then going to the employees for their input. And we provided all that information. Your request to us a few months ago, wow, it's probably more than a few months ago at this point, was to let's bring it to the community. So we did an overall community-wide survey. All the results are there, the numbers that were brought in gives a pretty good breakdown as to what everybody's thinking. A lot of the one-offs, I think, are a lot of the things that we're focusing on in terms of communication and really reaching out and having the ability to communicate well. So then I asked Emily to kind of help, help out today and give us a starting point. And this is what we came up with. Mission to cultivate a safe, sustainable, and welcoming community by providing reliable basic services, encouraging economic growth, and leading with a strategic vision. Vision is Wisconsin Rapids will be a vibrant, safe, and thriving community that fosters strong connections among residents, promotes economic opportunity, and supports a high quality of life. Values at the city of Wisconsin Rapids, we are guided by the following core values. Accountability, we take responsibility for our actions and decisions, delivering services with efficiency and transparency. Community-focused, we prioritize the needs and well-being of our residents, fostering a sense of belonging and collaboration. Honesty, we communicate openly and truthfully in all that we do. And integrity, we uphold the highest ethical standards, acting with fairness, respect, and consistency. So I guess at this point, I open it up to the, to the council to, for feedback in terms of what you think of, what has been brought forward as a consolidation of the main points that were brought to us from everybody that we've spoken to. And feedback as to if, what more we can add, take away, what that looks like. And from here, I open it up to you guys.
I think what we have here for visions, value, and even the mission does a great job at summarizing even the individual level feedback that we received. I'm just going to use an example of support recreation in our community that we can see is one of our visions, is to have a vibrant, safe, thriving community. Working with the government is reflected here as well with our mission of working with the community and providing those basic services while working with the businesses that responded. Overall, I think Emily and team, everyone who worked on this, did a great job summarizing and putting together the hundreds of pages of feedback. I looked at this mission, vision, values earlier today, and I couldn't think of even a word that I would add to it.
Yeah, my, my ultimate goal of doing this is to be able to bring this throughout the organization. Individual departments will still have their own, you know, sub-mission, vision, values, but this is an overall encompassing for the government as to how we want to present ourselves to the community, but also hold each other accountable so that we can, you know, be able to look back at this and say, we are not living up to this. Or if we have to say, you are not living up to this, I want to be able to have that, that clear vision, clear focus as to how to be able to do that. So again, looking for all your feedback in terms of helping solidify what we're looking toward, looking for here.
I was going to say, should there be anything about business in there? I don't see anything. It's a lot about residents, but should there be, you know, maybe underneath strong connections among residents and businesses, promotes economic opportunity, something along that line?
Yep, we can work that in there. Encouraging the economic growth, yeah, kind of encompasses a lot of that. But I think to, to pull it in, I think it's important. I know it's a big part of what, what I believe we need to move towards, continue to.
So I think when this first started, it was internal inside the organization with city staff, like you said. And then it kind of came to us and looking for feedback. And it was really like, well, it should go to the residents. But I've, I've been reading this and I think as an organization, it's, you know, like what Matty said, there's not really much more you could ask out of it. I did just want to bring up the point of, you know, separating the, the institution or the organization of the city and all its employees from, say, the, the politics that may happen with us sitting here tonight. I think they are in two different arenas, per se. And, you know, when we get into these political issues, which really are, you know, mission, vision, and values you should be promoting every time you're up for office and you're talking to a resident and then they decide whether they want to vote for you based on that. And it could differ from this. I mean, ideally, you wouldn't want it to. These are pretty straightforward and pretty honest. But, you know, if we get, if, if there were to be things you get into, I could just see someone, or you could interpret this as, you know, someone has a belief and someone else believes that it goes against like a core principle that we're going to lay out here. So I, I think it's important to note that the politics of it may be different than what's instituted in the organization of employees, if that makes sense. Not at all?
If you could expound on it a little bit, I guess you're saying there's a, you want to differentiate between the two or you're worried that there may be a differentiation or what?
Well, I'll just take one. So community-focused, like we're all elected for different reasons and we all might, people may have campaigned on different topics. What is community-focused to Dean may be different than it is to me or Dennis. So, you know, what defines that and who really decides that? And ultimately, it would be up to the voters in those districts. So when I look at this, it's, it's, you know, there's how many employees in the city?
Two thirty.
Two, two hundred and thirty employees. And, you know, we're the governing board and you're the executive of those employees. But aside from this, the voters choose, you know, what they want in their candidate.
Yeah.
I would say.
So just for clarification, like what, my hope out of this is to just have a guiding pathway for all of us to agree upon and be able to move in the same direction and just have a, a basic understanding of what it is we're all coming together to do. Understanding that elected are different than, than hired, but yet at the same time, we're all trying to move towards the same ends. But you're just saying you want the, the freedom to know that when you're being elected, when you're an elected official, this, it's more gray area than?
Yeah, I, I, not, not necessarily. I think everybody will interpret this differently, especially, you know, the front-facing discussions that will happen up here are, are really, the politics of it may need to be separate than what the implementation is in the organization. Like when you go to a department and you're looking for service from there, because it can just be interpreted differently by each individual person based on, you know, what they got into office for, what they ran on.
Okay, so in regards to this right here, how would you want us to proceed with?
Nothing, I'm just, I'm just noting that, you know, as we go through this, I think that the people should know that the politics of it are separate then. Like this is what I would see being implemented in essentially like a business or an organization that doesn't necessarily need to take public feedback and is working and generating for its own benefit, which a government does not. We're, at the end of it, we're accountable to our constituents. And, you know, for me, it's District Five, it goes around, everybody's got different people. So the, and, and that should be who guides your principles and your voting for the most part. But I wouldn't put that in here because that's politics and wouldn't necessarily apply to Paul, per se, as an employee. If District Five is upset with something that the rest of the city is not, that's my responsibility. If they're in the minority, you know, it's up to me to represent them, not necessarily the entire city staff. And so there's, there's politics and then I think there's organizational mission, vision, and values that kind of play in different arenas.
Okay. I think I understand what you're saying. And I, I guess ultimately, for me personally, as a, as a political figure, I guess, I would still want to know that I was working towards the same end as the community overall wants me to. But again, I do realize when you're elected, you can choose whatever path you want to go down, I guess. But, but ultimately, I think it does help for us to think I'm getting in to help the community accomplish their goals. But again, you're right, when it comes, if your district would be that much off track and they're saying, no, I don't want you, you know, to do this, then you have to be able to shift to do what they want you to do because they voted you in. So I think I understand it.
Yeah, and I think it's important to note that because there, it would, it would look odd and it would be odd if we all sat up here and agreed on everything all the time. So, you know, in, in that lens, it would be like, are we strained from the principles that we're laying out today? And, and we're not, it's just, that's the nature of this role versus being a city employee, for example.
I think I, okay. What struck me there was like when people, like you have two sides right now on the, on the federal level that are, they're both saying they're fighting for democracy, but yet they hate each other. So it's confusing. And you're saying we should have the ability to be free enough to say, well, I'm, I'm fighting in the best interest of the community, but they're nothing like what you want, somebody else is trying to accomplish. So you want that flexibility.
It happens almost every meeting, so I just think it's important to note.
Yeah, I think that we will always have our differences. I think that the mission, vision, and values hold us all, whether we're elected government officials or hired city employees to the same standards, using community-focused. And the, the benefit of one district versus the benefit of the city, you can easily say that the, every one of us has a responsibility to prioritize the needs and the well-being of our residents and our business. If anybody elected is not doing that, we have a problem. That's not okay. That is how it's written here. We can go by an issue that I know we don't agree on is fluorinated water. I think the best interest is to, I, well, it's an easy, clear differentiation. I think the best interest is to fluoridate. You don't. We are both acting in an honest integrity-filled way that is for the benefit of our residents, even though we don't agree on an endpoint. I think that even in a disagreeing argument, we are still abiding by the values. And if we didn't do that, then I think if we, if there was a segregation between what the government is doing as elected officials versus how we work with the city staff to do it, I think that's where we come into more issues and problems. Justin?
Thank you. I, I agree with you on what, what he said. I also believe that the mission, vision, and values that are in front of us are broad enough to give us a good guiding principle for ethics. And yes, we are, we are beholden to our constituents and that's why we're here. But we're also expected to be ethical in all our, our decisions. And this gives us a good guideline on, on ethics. Because ultimately, I mean, we can still say we're supporting, you know, the wishes of our district, but if we're acting unethical, we have to face, you know, the wrath of the, of the Ethics Committee. So I think, you know, this mission, vision, and values is good overall for the, for, you know, city employees, but also in addition, it's a good guiding principle for us as elected officials.
Matt? I think, I think the mission statement is great. Value statement is great. I think the one issue that we have is we still need to get the public aware. I don't know how many people are watching us talk right now, but I assume it's not a lot. And I think we talk, I've talked about that pretty much at every meeting when we get in these kinds of meetings, are getting exposure in the community. We have to find a way to get this out there. This, I was looking at this, how do they want us to perceive, be perceived? And it goes right down the line along our mission statement from the most, the highest valued. That's what we're trying to, but I don't know if we have an idea how we're perceived because it's hard to get it out there. And we, I think it's really a critical thing that we have to do is find a way, whether it be through the new website, whether it be through the new things we're trying to do, find a way to get the word out there better.
Yeah, just on, on that, Dean, I appreciate it. And we are working real hard with WRCM and myself and Emily and all the departments to, to really build the website. It is coming along and right now, it's, it's a matter of going through it with a fine-tooth comb to get it to the point where it's a website that we can be proud of for the next, you know, thirty years, because it's going to be here for a while. And everything that is built into that and everything we, how, the lens we look at it through is how do we use this to get more information to the community, to be able to talk with the community so they can talk back with us and communicate, you know, and get this stuff out there and track it. So we have metrics saying, this is how many people have our website on their, the front page of their phone and be able to, you know, peck away at it in early morning and get our news out there, our information. So yeah, everything you're saying I hear and, and we are working diligently every day to, to make sure that we can accomplish that goal.
I, I agree with most everyone here that our mission, vision, and values is, is well-written. I think one minor tweak on the vision that, that I would like to see, kind of based around, you know, the survey and the funding priorities is the longstanding challenge in infrastructure. I think, you know, just a simple statement, invests in modern infrastructure would help, you know, our residents realize that that's also our priority to correct. I think it would be good to acknowledge that.
Okay. I agree. Thank you.
Any further comments? We got Jeff and Jake. Have at it, Mr. Penscover.
I would agree with everything that's down here. You covered everything. You can go over this with a fine-tooth comb, you know, and finds something here, something there. But overall, as a general statement, with the addition of what Ryan had just said, I think this is a very clear-cut statement. It lets everybody know what our intentions are and what we are elected to do. You know, politics aside, we are all here for the same reason. And this covers it as far as I can see. Like I say, I would agree a hundred percent with the addition of what Ryan had brought up about the infrastructure.
Jake?
So for those who filled out the survey or are aware of it, we use that information to create this document, correct? And then do we take this information, are we taking it further into like individual goals or it just kind of gets built in along the way, the survey specifically? Because I think we move on from it after this. So what is the, is, was it mostly to assist with putting this document together? Or are we going to kind of take these results and implement them through governing? Or is that update how each individual wants to interpret it, really?
My intention is to be able to have a common, again, pathway forward for everybody. So we're kind of speaking the same language. We're not all doing our own things siloed is kind of what I've been working on trying to break down. And so I think that's what this was, to just give us a common place to stand. I believe that most of what we learned, you know, again, we know for the most part what government is supposed to do. And this kind of gave us, you know, to me, it put us on the same page with the residents. We weren't too far off. What are the, the main things we're shooting for? And then everything we do, we need to make sure they fall in line with this and promote it as such so that we're accomplishing what they want us to accomplish. Again, you know, it didn't go too far off the beaten path of what it is that we're here to do, provide services, which ones people felt were the most important, you know, I guess is what we're kind of looking for. But again, nothing really falls off the, the workload of what we're working on every day. But again, I think this is a great place to start with communication so that we're all kind of speaking the same language here in the organization, but most importantly, out with the residents and the community and businesses. Does that answer?
I think too, this helps us. I mean, we're talking about the budget tonight and what we're going to do in 2026. And if we talk about adding or cutting things and we look at what we have as a documented mission, vision, values, we want to make sure that every decision we make supports the, the modern infrastructure that our residents want to see and that we are promoting a vibrant, safe, and thriving community. So that means we're not cutting all of the funds to the fire department since you're here tonight. Make sure that we're all in line with the right goals for our city, whether we're government or employees.
I guess if there is nothing else, we're going to work with this, bring in the other ideas, you know, with the businesses and the infrastructure and incorporate those in there. But if we're all kind of in, in overall agreement, we'll move forward with this. And if you have any other input or anything, feel free to just reach out and we'll have a conversation about it. I appreciate it though. Thank you for all the work you do. Thank you to the community for participating in the survey, the department heads, all the employees. Like a lot of work went into this, so thank you.
Item number four, grants. We've got a 2025 grant update.
So what we did here was I asked Tim to go into the last couple of years. And thank you, Tim, for doing this. So, and I apologize because this was my fault. Tim sent it to me. I didn't look. I thought it was sent out to everybody, but it wasn't. We did get it to you. We can take a look over it. But we just wanted to give everybody a, an understanding of how many grants we do get every year for the last three years, what they look like, how much money's coming in. And if we have questions about it, it's going to look relatively similar this year? Or is there any major differences, Tim, that you would point out? Okay.
The schedule also, you know, includes our, our state aids that we get on an annual basis. So those usually don't change that amount, just in the amount. But as far as 2025 grants, I mean, usually our mass transit grants, the most state and federal for operating and any capital is in, we get that on an annual basis. Our local road improvement grant is kind of, you know, kind of, I would say, almost every other year. And as far as, you know, as far as foundations, I know that there's a legacy grant for the, for the River Otter exhibit, a legacy grant for the Witter Field Lights. I know on an annual basis, I know the police department participates in the Bulletproof Vest program. It's a federal grant program that funds fifty percent. We've gotten some grant applications from the fire department for forest fire protection and what was the other one? Hazmat, yep. So, so other than that, oh, we have some SISP grants. It's basically for our traffic signals. We've, we've been applying for those and that's usually about a ninety percent, ten percent. So it's a ten percent local match to upgrade our traffic signal intersections. I know that we've done, we, we completed one. We're in the midst of one of those projects. And I know that going to Public Works will be an application for a third SISP grant for traffic control intersection, signal upgrade, basically.
So in, thank you, Tim. In, in talking to all the department heads about it, they, one, we have a lot of our typical grants. Every year, we're, we're doing them. They know what they have to do. They fill out the paperwork. We get those. There are some that come up that are more special that they apply for. Fire Department does a great job going after what they need to and any new stuff that helps. We do have Grant Finder as a part of our, through the League of Municipalities. So everybody's looking at that. Again, the tricky part is, you know, when, when you have time above and beyond the other work that's going on in the day-to-day activities to be able to search out these grants. Right now, we are focused quite a bit on the website because it, it's a little bit more on fast track right now. But the grant program is in there and I'm working with Emily. Again, Emily does a lot of the, the work to be able to build a, a little bit more of a tracking mechanism so that we know people are looking for what they can, when they find it. Or if we find it, pass it off to them. We're just kind of putting them in a queue and, and being able to track and say, are we doing it? Aren't we doing it? If we are doing it, this is where the state, what stage it's at, stuff like that. So, so it's, it's good. It's there. Again, they're not easy and they do have usually, you know, money attached to them and ties attached to them. So it does add a workload if you get them. But at the same time, if we can get money and it works out for projects we want, we're doing our best to go after them and we're going to continue to build that program so we can keep going. We've been working with Mr. Penscover on this. We've gone down a few routes. One of them was working with somebody in the community who is no longer doing this. But she was somebody who sought out grants for anybody who came to her and, you know, paid her a certain amount upfront and then hourly. It's not working right now out because she took a different job, but there are other people out there that we're looking for. Again, it's something that is on the radar and we're going to keep moving forward with it. If there's ever any questions or any grants that you guys find, just let us know and we can look into it to get, you know, during the work hours. So any questions on grants?
Yeah, whoever this person ends up being or if it's multiple people, could they come and speak at a meeting to inform us in the community more of just the, the process of what they do, what goes into it, what they go after? And a presentation on those sorts of things? Grants specifically?
Yeah, did you, I mean, do the process, we go through here, Tim, for the most part, everybody's kind of, does their own department work on it. But if we do build it further, you're asking for somebody to come in and just kind of give a low, the lowdown as to how they, they function and how they go after them?
Right, because I'm aware of, you know, a department head presenting grant application, different phases, what the project would be, et cetera. We get that. But like you mentioned, there was someone in the community that was going to come in and work specifically on, you know, a variety of grants and perhaps be like a city grant writer. Did I understand that right, like some type of role?
I've actually talked to other organizations in the community and we were looking at trying to share one maybe so that we don't take on the full cost of them upfront.
Okay, yeah, if, if that person comes to be, if they could come in and give a presentation about, you know, what their role is, what their process is and, you know, what we should expect in that.
Sounds like a good idea. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm looking at the grant and state aid received from trying to side by side, very small font here, from 2022 to 2023 to 2024. It appears that our total grant dollars have steadily decreased since 2022. Am I seeing this correctly? In 2022, we have interest on them. The disaster relief grant, all the way down, we've got about 19,000. And then in 2023, 32,000. And then in 2024, 5,000. And our overall grant dollars, it appears, if I'm looking at this correctly, that since 2022, we have steadily received less grant dollars, whether they're state provided recovery grants or grants that we seek for like the Bulletproof Vest program or any of those other.
Well, some of that can be like in 2022, you had over 400,000 in FEMA-related funds related to the flooding event that we had. And so that's kind of like a one-time grant that doesn't, doesn't necessarily, we get every year because, you know, it was a FEMA stood the flooding grant. So it's more of a one-time grant for that. In fact, we really don't want those grants because obviously if we're getting a FEMA disaster grant, something bad happens, so.
So I under, I understand some variation in it. I just am trying to envision the portfolio of grants that we have and making sure that they are steady through and across the years. But these documents make it appear that we're not. Something happened in here where we were not seeking as many grants? Even if you remove the FEMA grant, we're still significantly less in 2024 than we were in 2022. I just don't know why. We're just seeking less grant dollars? How do we go back to 2022 to seek more grant dollars? That offsets our costs that we spend.
So we could dive in deeper to, uh, the departments because they're gonna know the most about the grants that they've gone after. Uh, we don't necessarily have an overall, like this is what we're working towards is building an overall grant program tracking, uh, to get in deeper, uh, as to what's available and what we're doing with it to be able to track it. I guess right now this was just, uh, information for you to be able to look at and understand, like this is what has happened with grants over the last couple of years. Um, and as we continue to build this program, we'll bring it to you guys and allow that. I did not ask the department heads to sit in. I told them they're welcome to join us if they want to. So I guess I don't have the, uh, ability to ask them individually as to like where, where they're at. And, uh, I don't necessarily know if I wanna put it all on Tim at the moment as to what, what's going on there.
Yeah. I understand. I think that'll lead into the rest of our discussion when we get to 2026 tonight. Any other comments about 2025 questions, grant update, 2025?
So, Tim, there's a lot of documents in here and the item reads 2025 budget update. So I guess if you could just speak to, we're running at budget, not at budget?
No.
Variating, how much?
Yeah. Yeah. It, it, it's the first quarter. So, I mean, we, you know, you're, you're early into the year. So, um, we distributed to department heads and had them review it, review their, their budgets and, you know, give us feedback as to any potential, uh, items that they're concerned about. And there was one, um, feedback from the police department about the police range account. But other than that, everyone else was kinda comfortable where they're at. I think you'll see a little bit more enlightenment, you know, the second quarter then, cause then you're halfway through the budget year and we're kinda right into, you know, our maintenance, construction and things like that, our seasonal operations. And then you might, so then I think that'll give a better gauge as to where we're at, you know, with the budget. But right now, uh, no department heads cited any real concerns through the first quarter.
I think it's, uh, again, this is, I speak with, uh, the department heads every month about their budget, any concerns they come up with. I think it's, it's been a good thing for them to be able to focus on it and pay a little bit more attention to it. I'm, I'm saying the ultimate goal in doing this is to start to think ahead as to what they're gonna be asking for in 2026, which we'll be talking about. Um, because otherwise we're, we kept running into where we're going in October, November and we were right on the crunch. So, so it's been good for them to, uh, start to monitor the budget, stay on top of it, kinda watch it instead of just knowing that it's there in the background. But then also be thinking ahead, uh, for 2026. And I think that's been helpful for everybody, so. I appreciate you guys asking for this.
Any other comments, questions, concerns on the 2025 quarter one budget report? All right. Our 2026 budget discussion, starting off with our debt financing expectations, ripping the Band-Aid off. Anybody?
So, what are we looking at for, uh, in talking to Ellers for this year yet, right? But then we're also gonna eventually start talking about next year and what the expectations will be for 2026. But we still haven't talked fully about what's going on for 2025?
Right. I, you know, on the finance agenda, I put in there for an application for a state trust fund loan. If you do believe it's, um, if you recall, we had about a 1.3 million, 500,000 or $1,350,000 uh, note issue budgeted for street construction projects. Um, however, this year, you know, we had a, in the general fund, we had an operating surplus of 400, $405,000 due to, uh, good investment earnings. I, I do believe our, our permit revenue was more than expected due to the hail storm. Um, and then a lot of times you just get, if we have turnover in staffing, you realize some savings there before you, you know, by the time the person, you know, terminates and then you get to hire, there's a leg there that, you know, provides some savings. So I, I feel comfortable, uh, applying some reserves that we can bring that down to about $725,000 this year. So we'll utilize some reserves to kinda mitigate the amount that we have to borrow. I sent everyone a, a PDF on just to kinda, cause you know, knowing that the debt, we're gonna have a debt discussion and just kinda laying out where we're at right now with our debt. I also put a hard copy for everyone. And just to quickly go through it, um, the, the first page is just, those are basically our outstanding debt issues that we have. And at the end of this year, um, our total outstanding debt will be $21,935,000. On page two is basically a schedule of our current geo debt issues. This basically lays out, you know, our current debt issues and the payment schedules that they're gonna have and kinda what effect it has on the debt service tax levy. Um, and then on the second page, cause this is the, this is the big discussion point, is I just put a, a schedule together of projected geo debt issues with the assumption that we're funding our street construction projects on annual basis going forward by issuing 1.5 billion dollars per year, kinda consists what we've done in the past years, give or take. And, and showing what basically that looks like just for that debt. So this is just the, the schedule and the tax effect just on the projected debt, not considering our, our current debt. And then on page, oh, sorry, page four, basically what this does is, uh, combines those two schedules. So we have our existing debt and going with the assumption that if we were to issue debt for street construction going forward, what that would look like. And so as you can see right now in 2025, we've got 21.9 million dollars of outstanding debt. If we borrowed 1.5 million dollars each year for '26 through '2040, as you can see there is that, you know, the debt would actually, will be declining each year down to by 2040, it'll be about 8.8 million dollars. And basically the reason that is, is because a lot of what drove the debt up over the past couple of years was some major projects that we had. We had the, the aquatic facility. Um, we had the East River Bank project and we had the fire station renovation. And so when you kinda look at on page, seven, you can see where I just kinda show, you know, what were the uses of our debt proceeds, the amount that we borrowed up to this point. And as you can see, street construction's about 34.4%. The aquatics facilities, right around that 34%. And also in that 21.9 million dollars, um, back in 2015, we had refinanced some water and light electrical revenue bonds. Uh, they, they refinanced those and able to, and we issued general obligation debt and they were able to take advantage of a, a lower interest rate. And I think they saved around a million dollars in interest on those. But that counts against our geo debt and that's in that number and that's 2.3 million or 10.8%. And then you see the East River Bank projects, 8.3, fire station one renovation, 11% and others 1.8%. So, so I just kinda wanted to, to lay out everyone just kinda what our current debt picture is and kinda what, you know, what that would look like if we didn't borrow going forward and what that effect is. And then I also, you know, made the assumption that if we continued to fund our street construction with issuance of debt proceeds, you know, what that looks like and, you know, going forward. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
All right. So I've, I've spent many years, uh, learning about the debt, the levy, uh, our capacity and even things like just how we compare to neighboring municipalities, how we utilize the debt to grow the community. I mean, it could be to stimulate economic activity. It could be to, um, renovate the fire station, um, support our utility, et cetera. You went over a lot of it, Tim, and, and I think, don't, what I would encourage the council, especially those of you that are new, if you get the chance, um, spend some time with Tim or go online and research this. Cause it is, uh, it's quite the, the big apple to take a bite out of to understand kinda all the moving pieces on this. And a lot of it's dictated by state law of why we even take debt, for example, with the inability to just raise our taxes to keep up with our costs. And so we have this conversation every year around budget time of like, well, we're taking this much debt and this much debt. And that's really based on what, what the state law says we can do with property taxes, which could always change. You know, Tim's got these projections here and it, it could by some chance change. Um, but I, this is how the system runs right now. And there's, there's rules around what you can borrow for, hence why we throw a lot of it into street construction. And no matter how you, you feel about the debt, um, and the, the deficit, when you look at our revenues versus what we spend every year, understanding it can help inform those decisions towards the end of the year. Right now, I look, I've been here for a bit, so I've watched this capacity number. It's a percentage of what the state allows you to borrow. I've watched it drop every year since we've been here, which I think is a good thing. We still have it though, which isn't ideal. Obviously no one wants that. But for those listening, I, Tim, if you could just go over quickly, like what that percentage is? And then you have the amounts for like comparable cities, Marshfield, Stevens Point, Wausau? And like where our percentage falls at, like borrowing habits, I'd say, versus neighboring cities?
Okay. I mean, for your municipal debt capacity, state, state law dictates that you cannot, you know, issue general obligation that's more than 5% of your equalized value. And right now at the end of 2025, we'll be about 27.2% of that capacity used. So we're well under the, the state, you know, law municipal debt capacity. Yeah. Whenever I kinda look at, you know, with debt, I mean, it's issuance of debt by municipalities is, is fairly common because that's really the, the one avenue they have to fund, you know, major projects. Because, you know, the problem is, is that if we chose to say, we didn't wanna issue debt to fund street construction, maybe say that, you know, we, we want, we would like to raise taxes in order, you know, solely raise taxes to, to fund that so then we don't have to borrow and incur those interest costs. But the problem is with the state levy limits, we're, we're capped at how much we can raise the levy. And in fact, this year, and it's based on net new construction, this year it was like a little over $40,000 that we were able to raise the levy because our net new construction, um, was low. However, in, outside the levy limits is, is that you calculate that levy limit, but then debt service is exempt from those levy limits. So if you issue debt and the repayment of that debt, those are outside the levy limits. So those get added to and are outside of it. So i- in essence, it's like, it's kind of funneled a lot of municipalities into having to issue debt because they don't have the ability to, to levy taxes outright for some of these projects. And then, you know, some of these projects are so big that you wouldn't levy a tax for it anyway because it would just cause a, a major spike in your tax rate if you didn't have levy limits. But that's kinda, you know, what's that? And I always look at like the principal portion that you're paying on debt. If you're consistent, in our street construction, the amount that we issue each year is fairly consistent. I mean, you know, it ebbs and flows a little bit, but it's, it's, it's right around in that 1.5 to 2 million dollars, you know, give or take. You know, obviously we were fortunate, uh, in '24 not to have to issue debt because we had the ARPA funds. And this year we're applying some reserves. But the, the actual principal portion is, is if you were just levying for it. The, the problem with that obviously is that you're incurring that interest cost, you know, above and beyond of what, you know, the, the project costs. And, you know, and that's, that's part of the problem with that is obviously that, you know, you're gonna borrow the money, you're gonna pay the interest. So, um, and then just kinda you wanted to touch on, and I just kinda went, uh, comparable municipalities. And these are just cities that were, you know, just in our general region. You know, Wisconsin Rapids, we're at 26.8 million dollars for geo debt as, at the end of 2023. City of Marshfield is 45.5 million. City of Stevens Point's 36.4 million and City of Wausau, 72.2 million. So that just kinda gives you a gauge of, you know, some of our surrounding areas, what those outstanding debt amounts are. I don't have their municipal, I'm sorry. I can get that.
Tim, while you're on that and you're just went through Rapids, Marshfield, Stevens Point, the AA3 and the AA1 or AA2, can you just describe which, those ratings and?
Yeah. Those are the Moody's credit rating. So when you, when you go to the, uh, when you go to the debt market for issue general obligation debt, you, Moody's, we utilize Moody's. They, they, they give you a credit rating. So they, you know, you fit out official statements, you provide them with information. Um, and it involves a, a conference call with myself, our financial advisor and the Moody's, uh, rating people. And so they, they assign a, a credit rating. And so, you know, we, we're double A3, which is, which is a good credit rating for, for a city of our type.
Is that better than A1 or?
Yeah.
My shit?
Yes.
Thanks for going over that, Tim. So I, I hope everybody was able to take something from that and maybe some new understanding. Cause- because I really, when I look at the city financials, it's, it's almost like you have to separate the two things from like projects, which generally fall under this, and like I said, can improve infrastructure, encourage economic activity, recreation, et cetera, from the reoccurring revenue that we face every year as we just, I mean, decide to add an employee or we take on a new subscription cost to something. They almost live in, in two different worlds, and, or they do in my head anyways. So I would just note that I think over the years, the city has made investments, but if you look, you know, to at our neighboring cities, they have as well, almost to a, a greater extent, and whether that's a good or a bad thing can be interpreted differently by everybody. But it's the reoccurring expenses that we look at every year, like when we look at a departmental budget of something that, if it stays at this, that's not a project, it continues year over year, or it increases. That's where you really start to kind of eat into any money that we have to pay down additional debt or do projects, and we only got a certain limit we can go with that, and then we, we hit that levy limit. So those are the two different areas I look at when we're analyzing the budget of, you know, what's projects, and the streets are always a project every year. And then what else are we doing versus how much are we increasing those reoccurring expenses? And I don't, you know, I'm, this is not uncommon. I think every municipality operates this way, so that debt conversation, it, it always sounds scary and bad, but it, the state, when this law was passed essentially dictated that this is how municipalities are going to be run, and what incentives they were trying to push there, that, you know, you have to pay interest essentially to do projects. It is what, who knows? But there, there's a lot to that, and I think, you know, the, I'm just letting everyone, those are the lenses I look through when we're looking at finances, and I, I will build that in the rest of what we talk about. But on, on chart, or page six here, this chart, I thought was great. I've never really seen it put like this, but it shows for residents who are interested in seeing this, it's in the packet, and, and those here today, it really shows where the city's debt at, and then where it's headed in the near future. And you can see we are on a decline. So investments or projects that were done in the past, those are being paid down, and those bonds are expiring, as Tim said. And we could look at it as one way of hold where we're at, hold tight and keep that capacity down, or you can always look at ways to invest in the community. But with that, there's a lot of projects we talk about that I try to bring this back to all the time, like which ones are we going to use that capacity up for? Is it going to be the railroad? Is it going to be A Street? Is it going to be insert project that we spend time talking about? You know, that'd raise those, those bars on that graph of really where we're going to go. So I always look, there's a percentage, and we know what we're at, and we know where we're headed based on the information Tim provided today. And the remaining percentage, where do we want to use it? Because it's not endless, so we gotta, when we talk about these projects, it's like which ones? Which, which one do you want to do? How far do you want to take this up? And I, all that builds into the credit score as well, as you work your way up there. So a lot to understand there, but I just think it's important as we, anytime we talk about the budget, that, that, that's kind of where those things fall.
I have been spending quite a bit of time talking to other cities' mayors, League of Municipalities. They do, like, there's, there's more and more pressure being put on the, the state officials that this isn't sustainable for the municipalities, so that, again, I'm not promising anything. I'm not saying anything, I'm just saying that, that every, everybody understands, including them, that it's not sustainable, what they're doing to us, like how the, the pressures they've put on us in order to, to exist like this. So certainly my voice, I'll put it out there as much as I can, at whatever level I can, to say this, this isn't the best way to run an economy. But at the same time, we're kind of stuck right now with, with the rules they put on us, so. I will keep you informed if anything comes from the state level.
I think the key point to be made here, and I know, I know we've talked about it, there's a misconception that, you know, the city is borrowing and, and, and bonding every year, and the debt just keeps going up and up and up. I think that, that's a widely, a vast misconception. And tonight here, these numbers that are being proposed, that is not the case. The debt is, as mentioned, steadily going down. You know, and this forecasting, which I appreciate, if we're able to, to bond for 1.5 million or less, that, that, that debt is going to go down at a fairly good clip, a million plus a year for some time, and then it dwindles down as the balance depreciates, right? So it's encouraging to hear, and I think a lot of people feel like the city is in this black hole, where we're, we're never going to get out of this, this debt. So that is, that is not the case, if that's what you think. So does that mean I want to borrow for 1.5 million every year? Not, no, I mean, we want responsible budgets, we want to make sure, you know, we're getting the best bang for our buck, the best bang for, for our residents. So that's by no means me saying, let's just keep borrowing, but it's encouraging to hear that, that debt is coming down. So thank you for this report, Tim.
I will say this also, like I, I didn't, I didn't do a great job of this last year, tried to bring some bigger ticket items to let you know, like, when the budget comes in and how much work goes on behind the scenes in order to provide you guys with kind of the executive budget. There's a, there's a lot of cutting internal that happens on a big level, and then on a micro level to just kind of keep working things. And I'm not saying I, I, I am still baffled by the overall budget and the numbers and everything that, that, you know, comes in and is going out. But I'm talking with Tim, and we'll do a better job documenting everything that kind of happened behind the scenes to the best that we can, so that you guys understand more of what took place in order to get you that executive budget at that time, so.
I would also like to add that I think having, having the council's input and this projection is fantastic. I agree with what all the person, Austin, said, seeing, being able to visualize without looking at the numbers, as I'm not an accountant, the graph go down. It makes sense, and I agree that I am not in favor of borrowing a million dollars every year, per se. But I understand that if we do that, and we make that our expectation and our limit, that we will eventually see a decrease unless we have any of these other large projects that pop up. I think it's nice to have the council's input before you begin those discussions with the departments. Otherwise, it's a little counterintuitive for me when I think about you assuming what we want to see and presenting it, and we assumed wrong. So that takes longer, I think laying out our expectations first is, is the way to go.
Yeah, I appreciate everybody making the time to come here, and Matty having the leadership to work with me and, and, and get everybody to the table now, so we can be on the same page and, and have these conversations and, and have a good understanding of where we're going. One other thing I would throw in there with the streets, Tim kind of presented it to me in a way, correct me if I'm butchering your words, but ultimately, when you're looking at the streets and you were taking out this money, and then you're paying the, the, the debt service on it over the next 10 years. But those roads really are being built to last, hopefully, we get 30, you know, 20, 30 years out of them. So again, you're paying more for them with having to pay the interest on it, which nobody likes. For sure, I don't. But at the same time, there is, there is a justification for the money that we're taking out right now if we're not able to get it in the budget. But you do have our word that we're going to continue to seek out ways of bringing it down and keep that borrowed amount as low as possible, so that we can keep whittling, whittling away at the graph go down.
Since I didn't hear anyone gawk at the overall debt financing expectations, is there any objection for the 2026 budget to proceed with the expectation that we will borrow 1.5 million dollars or less?
What did we borrow last year?
We didn't borrow money, because we had the ARPA funds that funded our street construction, Lincoln Street, Ninth Street, Wyatt Street. Yeah, so we had the ARPA funds that were utilized. In '25, we had, or in '20, yeah, the '25 budget, we had 1.3 million, 1,350,000 earmarked, a, a, a budget for a debt issue. And right now, with the, the good operating year we had in '24, utilizing those reserves and surpluses to, you know, basically get that down to 725,000 this year.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I guess that's, it's hard to get set on a number without knowing all the information. Like, I don't want to say, are we, I'm okay with borrowing 1.5 if, you know, maybe it's less. And then, you know, we'd set a buffer in there, like, wow, we said we'd borrow 1.5. So yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to commit to anything yet, but, I mean, I think this is a, was a good discussion around how all this generally plays into the budget, and then we have to see the rest all kind of roll in of what, what's being asked, or what's going to cost more, you know, where all the things fall. Without that information, it's hard to say what I'd commit or vote for borrowing.
And we're not absolute, I'm not, I'm definitely not approving, yeah, we want to see a budget with 1.5 million dollars borrowed. I definitely don't want to see a budget with over 1.5 million dollars borrowed. I think perhaps if we get that down, I also understand that we have to, we borrow for streets because that is what we are allowed to borrow for, and we need to borrow for streets because we're spending money elsewhere. If we didn't spend money on things that we couldn't borrow for, we could use that money to pay for the street construction projects. But our department heads will also have a challenge, because we have a pay increase every year for employees. We have an increased cost of benefit for employees, and we need to somehow figure out how to decrease expenses within each department or increase revenue within each department to offset that in order to keep this bond at 1.5 million dollars or less. And I think if we're all in agreement that the direction we want to go is no large, no large project? Like the, what we see in 2019 and 2021, where our graph increases drastically. We want to start working on matching our budget so that it flows in a way that gets us down to a million dollars by 2040.
So I think overall, just for clarification, I'm hearing the 1.5. We will strive to keep it as low as possible, to knock this down as fast as possible. But at this point, what I'm not necessarily hearing is, we don't want any debt, because if we don't want any debt, like you said, we have to find the money from somewhere. Like you said, Matty, it's a different conversation. So right now, you know, again, we're not going to just go to sleep on this. We're going to work our tail off to see what we can do to, to keep that as close as possible to no debt. But at the same time, we're having, we're not, right now, giving a directive of saying, no debt. That's what I'm understanding.
I'm comfortable with that, but I don't speak for everyone on the council.
Yeah.
Jake?
Anyone else?
I think, well, I'll just, I'll just say quick. If, if, if this council tonight said no additional debt, that would conflict with a bunch of conversations that have been had and decisions that have been made, some, a lot of them I voted against. I mean, whether it be talking about the, the future of the railroad on the west side, the future of A Street, we just acquired the, the foundry. I mean, all these things would require debt. So I'm not saying, you know, we shouldn't, I'd be happy if we didn't commit to taking any more debt, but there's been decisions made that are going to require it. And I think that's the point of, you know, we have these discussions at budget time, we're having one right now, but then a couple of months down the road, we start talking about something, and it's like, well, that's how it's going to be paid for. So if you're, if we're going to commit to a number, which we ideally could do every year and say, this is what it is, then we shouldn't be talking about those other projects, because they're going to require debt. So there has been some that have been talked about, and there has been some that have been voted on that I voted against or for, depending on what the project was, and those are going to require debt. So I'm just being realistic here about, you know, if you want to put a number on it, we need to start calculating in all these, these future things that are going to come to fruition that the, the council said that they're interested in doing. So I wouldn't put a number on it, right?
Well, I mean, you know, obviously, you know, the 1.5 gives us a, you know, obviously a goal for the 2026 budget. You know, but obviously, you know, as you can see, you know, you know, throughout time, you know, you have years where you have less than that, but then sometimes there could be certain projects that, you know, maybe are larger than what we normally do, that would require some discussion, or we, you know, we have to find some other funding source, you know? So, I mean, that's, you know, that was kind of the, you know, when the transportation utility, you know, basically was, you know, taken away, you know, that was one of our mechanisms where it was kind of like, maybe over time, we can increase that fee and slowly use that to fund street construction, and over a period of time, you, you know, you really, you know, you, you, you create a sustainable revenue source for street construction, and then less reliance on issuing debt for that, you know? And then you get the double effect of then, you know, obviously, if you're borrowing less money, then your debt service goes down, you know, and then, then the overall tax rate starts to decline. But, you know, kind of once again, you know, the transportation utility was taken away. But, you know, I guess over, you know, the next, you know, through the budget cycle in future years, is looking for some of those revenue sources that maybe we can supplement the, you know, the debt proceeds with this revenue source and taking a look at that, so.
You do have, like, while I'm in this seat, I guess, I'll always bring the plans and the, the ideas to you guys with the understanding that, yeah, we are talking about debt if we're going to do it. If not, that's great, but I definitely will continue to bring the ideas forward. And then during those conversations, we talk about debt or no debt, you know, do we do the project based on that? So I appreciate what you're saying.
I think it does kind of go against the beginning of the meeting, where we talked about all the infrastructure that people are looking for to, I, and I agree with Mr. Catno on that. I don't think we can put a caps on anything, right? I mean, basically, this is a discussion night, we also, we also have a desire by the community to have a growing and vibrant infrastructure. And at this point, the only way we're going to be able to do that is with some types of projects that will require debt. So at this point, I think it's a great to have a goal, but we need to move forward with the things that the community is asking us to do, yet stay within that levy limit. And so that's pretty much, that's the challenge of what we do, and we run it every year. But I think it's just the fact that we're having this discussion so much earlier is I credit you guys for putting this together, because having it this early does give us the opportunity to think a little bit more as it gets closer down to crunch time. Thanks.
Any other comments on general direction, where we're going? Do you have a good understanding, Mayor Zachary, on that? I feel like we gave you a lot of conflicting.
No, I think, I think I'm good. I think we hear it. Again, if there's questions, you know, give me a call, we can talk, and we'll just kind of, it, it's not the end of the conversation, but it definitely gives me the ability to address everything inside the operations, to know, you know, where we stand and what direction we're going in. So I appreciate it.
That will move us on to garbage and recycling determination as referred to, referred to us to discuss and make a determination on a couple of months ago from the common council. So as the referral writer is no longer with us and council, this came up as there were certain properties within the city that pay properties within the city that pay a property tax. And that tax is then generally divided between services that we provide, one of them being garbage and recycling. There are other municipalities that divide out the garbage and recycling service as an itemized line item, which would make it fair for all of those residential properties who are receiving that service to clearly be able to see what they're paying for. That also impacts, uh, residential property taxes slightly. Um, but, uh, in the negative, it impacts our overall levy limit because we will be removing that from the levy to be able to borrow against. Does anyone have any strong feelings on whether we keep it in the levy or draw it out as an item? Jake? Or Ryan?
Yeah, I've, I've always been in favor of keeping it in the levy. Um, it, it gets interesting to me that you pick one thing and it's like, well, we'll, we'll, we'll build that one separately. Um, but the truth of the matter is, the way property taxes work, if you live in a four hundred thousand dollar house and your neighbor lives in a two hundred thousand dollar house, you're paying more for police, fires, streets, you know, towards everybody's salaries that work at the city. Um, and so to just pull garbage and recycling out, you know, kind of goes against how all the rest of it works. And that, my biggest concern is actually taking it out of the levy because it can never go back in. So it's like a permanent decision, and if you look at the referral, um, let me pull this up here, and, and I don't know if Paul authored this, I think he did. But you can see that the garbage fee and recycling fee would then change and go up every year. And also residents, Dean mentioned earlier a lot, don't pay attention in the meeting, so now you get your property tax bill and it's billed separately. Um, and is that, is that an additional cost? And at, how many people are going to call and have it explained to them that, uh, well, actually, if you live in this assessed property tax value, it benefits you. If you don't, you know, it doesn't. Um, so, so you get into that, and I, I think taking it out of the levy without the ability to ever put it back, if it's a decision that wasn't best, uh, in the best interest, or we, or we figured out that it was not a good idea when things vary, like tipping fees and the, the cost of the contract, how much refuge is taken every year also fluctuates. Uh, it really hurts the people that are most vulnerable, which are like our seniors, our people on fixed income, I mean, a large amount of the community with just the fluctuation and what their garbage fees may be, uh, and benefits, you know, those living in higher assessed property tax values. So however you feel about it, I mean, that's kind of the, the breakdown out of it is which way do you want to go? Is, is it, is it fair? Uh, it would be more fair, but property taxes generally, you could look at, they're not fair in general on that basis, so. I think the easiest thing is just to leave it in the levy. That's what people have been used to. That's how we do it. And, um, that way, when there's costs increase, which there is frequently, um, it goes for the most part unnoticed, and they're not getting it on a separate property tax bill because we could never undo it once we would make this decision. So I do feel strongly that we should keep it in the levy and just do things how we have been.
Anyone else?
Paul, can you speak to potentially additional services that could be added if we remove garbage collection from the levy?
Um, so when the ordinance was writ, written initially, who, um, I guess I wasn't involved with it. That was prior to me. Um, but the original Public Works Committee designed, I guess what you would call Cadillac service, where, um, you know, Tim has a graduation party and he's exceeding his ninety-six gallon cart of garbage um, just for that one time. A person could come down to the garage and pay for those five additional bags or whatever. You'd give him a wire tie or something like that to, to put on those bags for ten dollars or what have you, and, uh, the driver would get out of the truck and, and pick that up and, and take care of it. Other fees, uh, we've had multiple conversations over the last probably sixteen months where individuals called because they wanted additional cans at their residence because they have a family of six or seven, or Grandma and Grandpa are living with them as well, or their family of four. Our ordinance currently, right now, um, doesn't allow that. We only provide one ninety-six gallon cart per resident. Um, duplexes, triplexes, and things like that are different. That situation there, you could provide that second cart and charge a fee for it. Um, that was originally kind of part of the plan. But again, the department administration said, no, you're currently not charging for this service, so you can't charge for it. If we got, got out of the levy and went to a, um, a service, uh, pay for the service type situation, um, you could provide that. You could provide that additional pickup, you could provide that additional can. Um, you know, it really kind of opens things up to go where you want to go. Um, so that's some things that could happen with it. Um, you know, I, I am kind of, you know, on a personal note, I guess I would say, as a resident of Wisconsin Rapids, um, you know, I guess I don't disagree with Alder Person Catnaw that it's part of the property taxes. There's lots of services that I personally don't use that other people use more frequently than myself. Um, but it is also fair. Um, you know, there's conversations about generating revenue or covering costs. Garbage collection does go up annually. The contract says that they can increase our tipping fees. So that is one way unfortunate, or one thing unfortunately that we can't stop. There's no other place to take our garbage, um, unless you go a hundred miles and you might still pay the same. Uh, so that's one way that you can cover those costs by charging a fee. There's lots of people that call and say, I'm new to the area and I just moved, and I want to get garbage collection. What's it going to cost me? And it's nice to say it's part of your property taxes, but there's a lot of people that are expecting to pay because a lot of communities do do a, a charge for, for the service or whatever. Um, but like I said, here, the, um, credit, I think Tim had it calculated out, what the credit back to the property owners would be for the credit to the levy, you know, and then, yes, you're going to pay an additional fifty dollars or whatever it was a year based off of the credit. Um, so I kind of went on a rant, I'm sorry. But, uh, but yeah, just some of those additional fees that have been talked about in the past could be available to residents then.
Oh, I, I appreciate those comments, Paul. Um, and that's been, that's been one of the main concerns that I have received from constituents is the inability to get rid of all their trash when needed, even though you get a weekly collection of ninety-six gallons sometimes, that's not enough for certain families. Um, you know, initially, you know, the thought of, you know, having the residents that truly use the service pay for it was appealing to me, but like you said, there's, there's lots of different taxes that we pay that we don't necessarily use the services, and that's, I think that argument is a bit moot. But I will say I've received enough, um, questions to, to definitely consider um, switching to, you know, from, from going to the levy to a, a fee-based service just because of the flexibility that would offer our residents, um, and the ability to potentially, you know, add extra service if needed.
And from what I've heard also is, you know, small businesses that can't, or find it not economically feasible to pay for a dumpster service every month would find something like this much more affordable than, than paying for a large dumpster service.
Yeah, and I guess that was one of the, uh, comments or statements. Uh, I don't think we really picked anything as far as the Public Works Committee went. Um, as far as would we expand the service to outside of residential properties? Um, I would be cautious of that because it could be a slippery slope as far as where do you stop? You know, you have a, um, like I said, then all of a sudden, Paul's going to be making a decision and you go one way, you know, we're here. The, the way the ordinance, in my opinion, the way the ordinance is written, is written well. It's a definite, def, I mean, according to the assessor, it's a definite, um, line drawn for residential properties versus commercial properties. You know, anything over a fourplex is traditionally considered a commercial property. Um, you, again, my opinion is, and, and I think the assessor kind of reiterated this as well, is that if you open it up to commercial properties, you'd have a real hard time to be, you know, drawing that line in the sand, you know? Um, because then all of a sudden you say, okay, you're limited to ninety-six gallons, which the old ordinance was. Well, now all of a sudden, that ninety-six gallons has another ninety-six gallons sitting next to it, you know? Um, and also, uh, the, that type of collection doesn't work real well down in the downtown areas or things like that because now you're going on personal property to get the cans and things like that. Where being at the curb side and residential is, is what works best for this, in just my opinion again.
Apologize, Paul, I wasn't here for these initial, initial discussions. So can you explain to me why we don't go into mobile homes? Is the trucks too big? Is there, like the mobile home parks? I can understand condominiums and those things, the things that are packed together, where like a mobile home park is kind of spread out and you have your own driveway and.
So the, the biggest, a, a mobile home park is considered a commercial property. It is traditionally one parcel that the, I may say this wrong, but the tenants of a mobile home park, they pay for a lease of that property that their home sits on, but they don't pay it, Tim, please correct me if I'm wrong, but they don't pay it to the city. They pay it to the owner of the property. So, you know, so there may be thirty trailers that are on, in that park, but there is not thirty individual parcels. Um, and so the way that the assessor looks at it is, is that that is looked at as a commercial property. There is, I believe, individual, um, personal property taxes that the owner of that trailer pays based off of the value of that trailer, but it pays that to, in essence, their landlord or, or the owner of the park. Um, and so that's just the biggest difference is, is that our ordinance says we will pick up residential property, single family to four, um, fourplexes.
Okay, so by approving this, does that then open it up to other commercial properties since you're saying that we would do it for this, or it would just be spread?
So this, um, to my recollection of this, this, we're not changing the ordinance as of right now. The conversation was simply just to credit everyone back to the levy and consider or continue to pick up residential garbage based off of the current ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
So I think you're already starting to see how this can, uh, open up a whole bunch of other stuff. Uh, essentially, you remove it from the levy, you make it fee-based around some type of ordinance that can change. Um, and you, you got yourself a, a garbage collection business, is what you got. I mean, it's been mentioned that other towns and cities, they got this separate fee. Well, if you drive through these places, you'll see on the bins, it's waste management, it's contracted. So if we wanted to go that route, I mean, that's what they do, and that's currently what the small businesses, everybody else does. It's, it's a contracted service based on your needs. Um, and we've currently taken it on as a city, and now you start, you take it out of the levy, again, it can never go back. You start this, every council or everyone who's got an idea with the garbage, we just always change it and then adapt to the new services that we want to provide, or to a business, or the other end of it, you decide to take it away eventually, and they're relying on it. Um, and it just gets, it really opens up this, this hole of like, where, where does the service end? Because you can change that ordinance and tweak it as much as you want, once it's removed from the levy and, and turn it into a garbage business. So I, uh, where it currently stands, I, I don't want to go down that path. I don't think it's been a problem. I personally haven't gotten a lot of calls on it. I've, I've gotten a couple on people asking for, um, large item pickup, which wouldn't be included in this at all. But I think as it works now, it's, it's been a, a working system. It, it has an ordinance that has, outside of a, a few different things, worked for the most part, and, you know, I'm not going to reiterate my comments earlier, but again, I, I don't think this is beneficial to most property owners, or they'd even be aware that the change is being made and we just add a garbage fee and they get their tax bill.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of taking it out of the levy at all. Um, I think that um, the, it would be an extenuating circumstance, in my opinion, to need an extra pickup. I mean, we're seeing there's people that have, that in the levy are being disadvantaged because they might not be able to fill it because they might have more than garbage than they can take in a week. Um, I don't know, I, that's happened to me before when I, like, I just cleaned the shed out this weekend. I totally filled up my day. I left one bag in, in the garage, and when they emptied it, I put it in for next week. I mean, that's just kind of the way I look at it, and, um, I think it's a good service, and we have a um, conceivably clean um, neighborhoods because everybody's taking their garbage out in one swoop and not leaving things out on the lawn. I, I just don't see any advantage, really, to taking it out of the levy. It seems like it's, I'm a, I'm a, if it's not broke, don't fix it kind of guy, and I don't think it's broke. That's my opinion.
I tend to agree. My, I like to snowball with things when we get a request. Like, this, this request initially came because it wasn't, it wasn't fair, which is a little bit of moot point, but, um, there's a lot of things that we pay for that aren't necessarily fair. Um, my property pays for storm sewer, and I am not connected to the storm sewer. Uh, there are properties over in my district that pay for curb and gutter through their yearly tax bill. They don't have curb and gutter. They're not anticipated to get curb and gutter for quite some time. So I could argue why, why would they pay for that as well? Um, I don't want to see us have to itemize or break down individually the services for what we provide. I think it's cleaner, it's easier to say, listen, we're all paying for all of the curb in the city. The reason why you're paying now is because eventually you'll have it. We're, we're paying to maintain our overall water system so that we can provide a vibrant community that is safe for our residents. So I like, I'm, I'm with Dean and Jake, it's not broken. Uh, but I do have a question about the additional services. So if somebody does have additional garbage, um, there's nothing that prevents them from, you know, asking their neighbor. My neighbor, I know, never has a full can. If I had an additional bag, I could easily go over and say, hey, can I put this in your can this week? That's not a violation of our ordinance or illegal in any way.
No, and I actually think it's written in the ordinance to do that.
Thank you.
Would we be bringing this back on a committee in order to take a vote on it? That you know, and that when you brought, when we brought this forward, I guess, I don't have anybody to ask at this point. But I think we need to bring it to a commit, this is what I'm saying. Let's bring it to committee so that we can vote on it officially. Can we vote right now?
Yeah, I'm okay with voting right now if there's a motion. And Paul?
Just to Alder Person Catnaw's, um, comment, um, I will say that I'm not necessarily in favor of a bulk item pickup because it turns into picking up stuff from the town of Saratoga and the town of Grand Rapids and everything like that. But if there was a desire by this council or, or whatever to do that, right now we have no mechanism in place to be able to do that except for coming up the funds through the budget. Um, because the department administration, I believe, said that that was a service. Because the department administration, I believe, said that that was a service that we currently provided and we can't charge for that. So just making that, again, I'd much rather fix a hundred and fifty miles of roadway and try to come up with funding to do that than to go and pick up bulk items. Again, because that's a service that I don't need. And, but just making that point that if we did pull it out of the levy and do a monthly fee or whatever, we could include that as something moving forward. So again, not in favor of it, but just bringing that to light.
If we want to vote on it, we need a motion.
Yeah, my understanding too, if nobody makes, because it would be a kind of a negative, so.
What we had decided on at Public Works was to, to itemize it and remove it from the levy. That went to council. We did not make a decision at council, that came here. So if we don't do anything with it tonight, it's going to go back to council with approving, removing of it from the levy and itemizing it on the tax bill. That's where it currently sits now. Unless we decide here to send it back to Public Works.
Well, then it would already be done. If it's just been bouncing around and referred somewhere, I mean, there's been no action, there's been no ordinance approved. Or we would already have it implemented. We would already have it changed. Referring it back and forth doesn't necessarily confirm.
Motion to approve removing garbage and recycling from the levy.
Thank you. I'll second. And since we don't have our tablets, all those in favor, we'll go raise of hands for aye, hand down for no, aye.
Aye's saying you want to remove it from the levy?
Correct. All those in favor? Okay, that's, seven, one, seven, that'll go to council when we review these minutes to finalize and approve. That would remain the garbage and recycling as is.
And you have a list of the a's and n's?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I seconded, yes. Item C, streets and engineering projects, I believe this was.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So I just wanted to bring this to, to the, to you guys and have a discussion about it. I've talked about it internally and I, I just want to kind of get a general idea if I should continue to move in this direction or not. So just laying it all out there transparently, we, I didn't fully understand this and then I started again talking to other mayors and other communities and understand that we're pretty rare to have a construction company and to have an engineering company within our organization. Most cities don't, they just fire most everything out. And I guess ultimately I want to keep it on, on the up and up. If we're doing something like this, I want you guys to know about it and I want the community to know about it so that it's not something, you know, that we get a lot of pushback on later. But because we have these resources and we're looking for ways of, of helping our community progress, I guess, move forward, build housing. You know, we come up with some incentives when bigger businesses come in, but when it's smaller stuff, we don't always look at ways that we can help. But we do have an opportunity to help when we have the ability to use our machinery that we've paid for and the labor that we've already paid for in the budget. And typically it's, there's some understanding that has to go into how you would pay, you know, like move the money from one department to another in order to pay for those resources, whether it's wages or using the machinery. But I guess I just see that if we can make something happen, like what happens is, for an example, somebody comes and says, hey, I want to, I want to build all these houses on a street, but I need the infrastructure, I need the sewer and the water and all that stuff. And we say, okay, so we go to work and we put together a bill or a estimate that would cost, if we used our resources, seven hundred thousand dollars to get the infrastructure into this area so that they can build the houses. So if you say, okay, it's going to cost seven hundred thousand dollars, typically with the smaller organizations, what we're running across is they're like, it's just too much. We can't build, like they could build houses for that and then tack on that money to those houses if they're high-end houses. Because then people, you know, say they don't care, but they have the ability to pay for higher-end houses. So what we're looking at is more, not low-income housing, but affordable housing. Somewhere right now, which is crazy, we're up to like that nine hundred dollar mark for rent. So in order to build a house that can rent for nine hundred dollars or a duplex that can rent for nine hundred on each side, you know, they got to keep their costs at a certain point. So if we say seven hundred thousand dollars, they say, well, we're out. You know, we're not able to do the project for that. But if we're able to say, okay, well, when it comes down to it, the actual cost of materials is, and gas and diesel and everything else is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're attacking, or attaching to labor and rental of the equipment, use of the equipment, we could use as an incentive to say, okay, we're contributing this much to this project as the city and we want this to happen. So we become a part of the development, we have a say in the development if we incentivize with being able to put that in. We're not spending that money, the money's already spent on the labor and the equipment and everything else. But then we're putting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars onto the contractor, which is a little bit more palatable for them to be able to divvy it up over the, the cost of that. Now, this wouldn't be something we would just do willy-nilly, obviously, and we would have to bring it to you guys to talk about. But I guess what I'm looking for is some kind of a, some feedback as to if we should look down this avenue to be able to incentivize some of the smaller operators in the community or developers to get some of this growth that we need. But it's hard to come by right now because of the cost of the development and the materials and everything else that's going on. So I welcome your feedback. Thank you.
Hundred percent all in, that's all I got.
I, I think, you know, when, when you said we, we do it for the more expensive houses on a street, but we don't for the lower-cost houses.
Let me clarify.
Okay.
We, we don't incentivize higher, like we, I'm saying, like we wouldn't do it, but they could add it into the cost of the more expensive houses and people will pay it. We do do this for certain businesses, usually bigger ones when they come in because we want them to come to our community. But I'm talking to more mayors in, in communities and they, they're finding creative ways to help. And a creative way we have to help is that we are funding a construction company and an engineering company on our payroll.
And that's where I was going with that is why, you know, it might make it more an incentive for more building if we can do that more often versus just tacking it on there, so.
At, at current standpoint, it seems kind of general. But like clearing space for developers versus them going and clearing current parcels? Or is that generally the idea?
I was only talking about putting in infrastructure so that they can build houses there. We wouldn't clear their properties, we wouldn't do any work for them on the development site.
Yeah, I, I would say it's a case-by-case basis because there's the cost associated with it. I mean, you know, we just talked about all this, we would have to bond for it. So case-by-case basis, if they present a development and it really seems like it would be worth putting that in, like has happened with, you know, business parks and Metalco and other, other things the city stepped in and done that. Really hard to say, yeah, yes, across the board, but on a case-by-case basis, which it would have to come anyways. Like, yeah, we want to incentivize and bring people here for sure.
I understand when, when I'm talking about this is we wouldn't be looking at bonding for it. They would pay for the materials, like whatever that cost was that would have to be brought in. The, the labor and the machinery has already been paid for in the budget. So it'd be kind of, you know, like figuring out where the money comes from on the budgets in order to fund one to the other. Because it's all, I mean, so my understanding through, I don't know if you want to jump. But, but what I've learned from Tim is, is typically everything that everybody does in the, in our municipal government, it, it has a funding source from somewhere. And the reason that helps is because if you show where the money comes from and where it's going to, we can get money from other government sources, state sources, to pay for some of those projects because it can be justified. So we go to great lengths to show where all the money goes, you know, in the budget, whether it's through, you know, from one department to another in order to pay for certain things. And it all makes sense in the end to Tim. It's a lot. I mean, again, I'm learning a lot of just how much goes into coordinating the budget of a municipality. Of? I can say, just for an example, what we talked about earlier with the police range. They kind of talked to the streets department and they were able to find some time after the streets were over before it was too cold to, to do work outside and they were able to do some reconstruction of the berms and different things that were done there. So then they send a bill to the police department and the police department's budget has to cover that fund. So they, they should be budgeting for it, so they get a lot of that money in the new budget. And then they take that thirty grand and give it to the streets department and that goes into their budget in order to cover some of their expenses and that kind of goes back and forth throughout everything that we do.
I thought we were talking about like not intergovernmental stuff.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, because I've answered that question for you of what I thought you asked. But yes, this would be outside of that kind of, and that's where it gets a little bit, you know, trickier. And that's why I'm asking if you guys want us to bring these things to you and say, this, this wouldn't be something that another department would be paying for.
Is there an example of?
Of what?
I understand what you're saying, but like what would be an example of this?
So we had brought to, mm, don't know if I can, that's, yeah, close, yeah.
I have a yes, no, maybe, this will help.
Okay.
I'm interested in buying a parcel of city property and I want to put a business on it. It's very convenient for me, but the cost to put in that, to move the water main or to put in the driveway, the berm that's in the backyard is too much and it makes me not want to buy the property. So I would go to Kyle and I would have that conversation and then it would come to planning commission, which we could add, add on using our existing crews to offset some of the costs that I would put in personally to develop. Is that something that we're going to pay for or could consider?
Yeah, again, that's, that's kind of what I'm asking you guys, but it would be an example of saying we can, we can help with this in order to get you to the point where you can hook up to the infrastructure so that you can build your property and then we make taxes off of the home that you built.
And if I bought my property from a private party and I wanted to use city crews versus a hired contractor, that would be the same or we only focusing on city property incentives, selling property we already own? Not reaching into the public sphere to say, hey, we are going to actively pursue potentially taking away business from contractors within our community? I'm okay with our properties, not...
I, I agree with you and that's the only thing I've ever thought about was our properties or our streets. You know, where it would be our street that we're building to put in that infrastructure. We wouldn't be going on their property and hooking up. That would be a private contractor that would have to hook from the house to our infrastructure. So we're just putting in the infrastructure so they can build the house.
Okay, thank you.
I guess it depends on the way you look at this and I, you know, I understand the thought process of case-by-case basis, but you know, at the end of the day, if, if we, we really want to make a program like this work, we have to take a bit of a plunge. And, you know, there's some city properties that I think we have the crews, especially some availability in the winter months, that we could knock out some work and, and do it in a way that is cost-effective and helps entice development. And that's particularly what I would be interested in. At least, you know, getting some numbers put together on some potentials. And I know Paul might have a couple instances in mind and, you know, really looking, you know, crunching the numbers on it and, you know, potentially looking into grant dollars. We're not, we're not talking about something that's going to move fast, but at least looking into it, giving it some due diligence, I think is, would be a good thing.
I'd be willing to greenlight any conversations you have with people and bring them back to us on a case-by-case basis. City of Wisconsin Rapids is open for business. Let's start talking to people and see what's out there.
Any further comments, questions, clarifications?
Thank you, everybody.
Twenty twenty-six grant expectations in relation to the budget. Piece not already spoken. I'm, I'm a big fan of grants. I think however, we can offset our cost with grants, whatever materials we need to provide to our department heads to help get them on the right track with offsetting costs. I think it's great. I don't know how we can change the culture and motivate specific groups that aren't seeking grants to help where go out and find grants or, I think the plan that we have to talk to people is good. I don't want to set any explicit numerical expectations for departments to achieve specific grant dollars in the twenty twenty-six budget.
I think as long as everybody knows it's the expectation and we find a ways to help make the, the process a little bit more mainstream. I think that's what most people fear is the amount of work that goes into it. So the more we can ease it for everybody, I think the more effective we'll be.
Does anybody object to grant dollars being sought? Great. All right, overall expectations or recommendations for twenty twenty-six balance? I believe we covered this, but if there's any further comments? How about a timeline? When will we next talk about our budget for twenty twenty-six?
Yeah, so again, we, we're kind of getting a little bit of a later jump because of this meeting. And I think this is important. I think, well, we're going to do this every year and it certainly helps after we get the new alderman in, get everybody up to speed and have this conversation. I, I agree with Tim, you know, that first quarter comes pretty quick and doesn't, doesn't tell a whole lot. But I think all the department heads are, you know, again, I'll continue the conversation with them to make sure we're staying on top of the budget. I mean, we should be anyways, it, it shouldn't be a question. By the time we get to the second quarter, it's about the time we started it last time, which was the end of June is, is the second quarter, end of the second quarter. And that's when we're going to be looking for what they have on paper to be able to talk about what we're looking at for this year. If there's any discrepancies, what we're looking at for the rest of the year. Have that conversation with you guys early on and then be prepared with any vision that they have for things that they want to start looking at for the following year. So that, that's a conversation we're having early on and not right at the end of the budget cycle for the next year, so. So I think we're good and we'll be talking again. Do you want to do this separate or just through the finance? Put it on the finance budget and have that conversation then, or the finance and property committee, I think?
To review the budget, the budget as it develops with property and finance or have committee of the whole?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. Do you want to do this again or do you want to do it through finance and property committee? I'm fine either way.
I think I spoke about this the last time we met about this. But, so it used to go through finance and property, it's a three-person committee. Kind of the expectation when you got placed on that was, do you have a lot of availability and are you ready to go through it all? And what I would say from my experience back then was just, you know, those three people that were on there were able to spend more time deep diving in. I guess there was, you know, not that other aldermen didn't attend. were able to spend more time deep diving in. Um, I guess there was, you know, not that other aldermen didn't attend, but when determining budget items to get two votes to pass something or, or take it out was a lot easier. We just have to recognize that. I think we've been doing this for three years and we don't ever get five votes to change a proposed budget when it comes to us. So it, it was done previously. I thought it worked more efficiently. Um, but if we continue to do it the same way, that would be fine too. I just would have the same expectations. It's just that we kinda get around here and talk about the humane society of their library for hours and then nothing changes anyways. Not that, that will happen this year to those parties, but that, that's what's happened. We did, just nothing changes. So I think it would be a point in time to look at like, okay, we tried that. It didn't work. Maybe we try something else.
I think having the discussion too and being open to discuss and ask the questions about it. I, I appreciate that we had a breakdown last year of each department's budget. It was nice to be able to see the goals of and hiring an assistant in the clerk's office, that, that's a goal and this is how much it's going to cost. And now I can look at that this year and see that we did that and that was accomplished. And we have a full picture of where the money is going and how it's being spent. I think part of our problem is, is that we have, we don't have a lot of questions. I don't know why that is, if everybody understands it way more than I do and I'm the only one to come with questions. But um, having those questions and the conversations and knowing that we're all working towards the same goal, whether we're talking about library funding or the humane society or the clerk's office, we just need to be able to have that as a bigger group. Um, whether we make changes or not, I think it's valuable to have the entire group here so that we don't have the same conversation. And even if you get a majority of a three-person committee to approve something, it's gonna come to council and we're probably gonna vote it down by five. So I think you're in the same situation, no matter who reviews it.
So the way it works, I'll use the last year as an example. So we get into the budget discussions and the humane society gets picked out as one of these items that we really need to look a bit further. It went to finance anyways, out of the committee of the whole and finance took it up and pretty much took it to completion. All the way and it was like an ongoing, we're having budget meetings too, but they're still coming to finance and so it's almost like you're meeting twice on it. Um, or almost three, if you have a committee of the whole and you talk about it, you have a finance committee and you talk about it and then you have a common council meeting and you talk about it. You're talking about the issue three times, uh, and we just didn't see any results from it. So I don't, I don't know it, which one is better. We have new faces, new people. But I just know that when the budget comes forward to get anything out of it or add anything in. It's gonna take five votes and a lot of time from everybody and everybody's gotta do the same amount of research and get the same amount of investment from it. And you know, it gets to this point where finance is vetting this stuff all year. And then if we're gonna transition into a committee of the whole meeting, I think a lot of that should probably stay there then. If the discussion is as a whole, committee of the whole, I don't know why we would break out some stuff and put it on finance for a couple meetings and then bring it back to committee of the whole. Either, either we're working that budget through committee of the whole or we work it through finance.
Yeah, and I think part of the, the struggles with our, our routine hot topic points is that we tend to forget after it happens. Where we forget that we had an issue with, sorry humane society for picking on you today. We forget that we had those discussions and we don't put anything in place to prevent us from having those discussions again the next year. So if we all commit to trying to proactively solve those issues. I wrote a referral to property and finance to have the contract for the humane society reviewed to determine what the city would like in it. I think that is a little bit different than how that, how, what services are outlined in that contract and how we pay for it in the whole budget is fine being separate for me. I'm okay and I, I like having a committee of the whole discussion versus having a committee of three with the entire budget.
I'm for the old school way. I, I prefer it being in finance and um, and bringing it. We can certainly bring everything to, well, council or a committee of the whole either way. But um, again, I know we tried, we, the last year or two, we've done it the committee of the whole way and um, that one year, I think we started it because you'd had everybody bring in, everybody presented their budget. Which there's nothing wrong with having a meeting where the, where the um, department's heads present their budget to everyone. But then I think then to get the work to, the work should all be done at, at finance first and then bring it forward. It just seems like, and it, it's not even a question of a three-person vote going faster. It's just, that's, that's particularly the finance committee's role. And um, that's just kinda the way I, I feel for it.
So I believe I was the one that changed it. So, sorry about that. No, but uh, the reason I did it and the, what I still like about it was when we would, when I became the, the chair of the finance committee. We would do all this work in the finance committee and then we would get to October, November, right before the budget. And then we would present it to the council and then, and then nobody, like we started the whole process over again. And nobody really knew what we were, what was going on or what questions to ask. And so that first year, I said, I believe that we should become more involved because it is the most important thing. And it, it goes beyond just the finance and property committee, like for, for three people to kinda control the direction of the budget. It just never made sense to me and I know that I'm way more like, probably think more about like, I, more information to everyone to better. That's how I always kinda live, but so I, I think it was good. The first year we overdid it and I think we had way too many meetings. Uh, and I think last year, uh, we did a great job with being able to have this discussion, have a, a midway discussion with the committee of the whole. Finance and property can, is gonna do its thing, like it should do its thing regardless. But knowing that as a whole, we're all on the same page with where the budget's at, uh, I think that's good. I think it's good. I think it gives some clarity. Uh, and we're prepared for October, November as a group. Uh, but again, if finance and property still has the ability to take on certain issues that they need to, if that's what they wanna do. Like I never said, this is like how finance does it. I went to the president of the council and said, I wanna call committee of the whole. What do you think of calling committee of the whole meetings in order to get us all on the same page? It never necessarily changed how we did it. It was just changed how I did it. So, thank you.
Well, if in effect, we're doing this way before October and November, that's, that's the kicker. If, if the first, if finance starts dealing with it in late September, that's another story. But yeah, I agree, but bringing it to a committee of a whole is not a problem. But again, the earlier we can get it in front of finance, at least to get the groundwork going, it just seems to make more sense to me. And then we're bringing a cleaner me, a cleaner version to the first committee of the whole.
I, I like that. I think that makes sense. Um, that allows us to have change or discussion of changes in more detail. Um, it also allows us to not have the same conversation about a budget item two or three times. And it streamlines getting it through.
So that's kinda sounds like what happened last year, pretty much. Um, I guess I'll go back to what I said earlier. I, I think if we're gonna take the budget up as a committee of the whole, we should take the budget up as a committee of the whole. Or finance takes it up and it comes to common council as it does with the committee of the whole again anyways. So one way or the other, but I'd ideally, you know, trying to keep the, keep it organized and keep it in one forum. Cause again, if you, if it is on a committee of the whole and then it goes to finance and property and then it gets considered at the council, you're taking it up three different times. You know, is that necessary? Is it just not getting done in a committee of the whole if it has to go to finance then? And then we pull it out and we talk about it at council again and then finally vote on it. So I, I, what I'm just saying is, you know, it's gotta be, it, it should be in one forum or another. If it's gonna be a committee of the whole, we're gonna talk about the budget and it's that way, well, that's where the discussions should take place then. Um, then you go, if you try to take it down to finance and it's going back up to common council anyways, it just gets in this kinda revolving like situation and uh, I don't know if it needs to be like that. So one way or the other, I would say, not both.
I, I hear what you're saying. Um, I feel like the committee of the whole is educational, informational. And the finance and property still has, like the committee of the whole still has the ability to say, we need to dive into this deeper, this issue or that issue or, you know, whatever they decide. And then we become super ineffective because there's eight of us versus being able to send it to the committee and say, hey, attack this issue and, and figure out what's going on and, and bring it back to us as, as a council. But in the beginning, the beginning of this conversation was, we're gonna meet again. And you asked me when and I said at the, at the halfway mark. So I think the end of June, well, we can meet again. And I said, you wanna do it as committee of the whole? Uh, and we could actually invite all the department heads. They'd be happy to join us and uh, and they can give a brief rundown of things if we want them to. Uh, and see where we're at, at that time and get their input as to what they're looking for for twenty twenty-six. It's only gonna make them better at their job as department heads to have that foresight. Um, so I guess to answer that question, I think halfway through would be a good time to, to bring them to, talk about it.
Yeah, then I wonder why, why wouldn't we, but Jake, and the how many meetings do we need to have about one topic? Why go to, why have a committee of the whole? Why not talk about it at council? I mean, the budget, the quarter two budget will be reviewed by property and finance. And then that'll go up to council and at council, we'll have a presentation from our department heads. Saves us all and our department heads one.
Extra time.
Six to eight meeting. Yeah.
Well, it's funny because that's why, now that you say that, that's why I asked, do we wanna do it like through finance, through the council? So I agree with you a hundred percent. We don't need to have an extra, extra meeting. We could do it at the council. So, thank you for that clarification.
I do like the little bit more relaxed, um, in the committee of the whole and the, and the committees to be able to do that educational discussion about future budget and to have those questions. To me, it doesn't matter where they go as long as we don't have to have the same conversation three times.
I agree. Thank you.
Ryan?
Yeah, I can, I can trust finance to, um, you know, lead the budget discussions. I mean, to me, if you're an older person and you're not paying attention to the committee meetings, you're doing a huge disservice to your constituents. Um, but with that being said, there, in my opinion, there is, there is good reason for some committee of the whole meetings. And uh, one of the main reasons for me is if there's gonna be any sticking points when it comes to budget time and you know, some hard lines in the sand for some of these departments. And um, we've already named a few where we've had those issues in the past. And I think we owe those departments a bit of an explanation or an expectation, um, in advance if, if say their budget is going to increase or if there's a number that you're uncomfortable with, um, at least getting those departments that information. I know it's hard to do before you get the numbers. I understand that. But um, we've come to, you know, some roadblocks at the ninth hour in budget time. And I'd really like to try to clear as much of that up as possible. I know it's not all possible, but as much as possible. So that would be my, my reasoning to see a committee of the whole, but beyond that, I can trust finance to do the rest.
Any other comments? Questions, concerns, thoughts? Is that Paul?
So are you setting a timeline then?
Timeline for twenty twenty-six?
Yeah.
That we're meeting at the end of June to determine what, um, where we're at? Which gives us a good projection for rounding out twenty twenty-five and going into twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, and we're doing that at the June council meeting is what I just understood.
Okay, um.
When our department head budgets due to you? It varies.
Yeah, I mean, last year we did it the end of June. It more or less was the end of July. By the time everybody gets everything together and we have a good idea what's going on, typically, right? End of July. So I guess we're starting the process of, yeah, cause it goes fast after that.
I think the timeline, um, kinda really starts with that. I mean, we could have pre-discussions before those come in. Value, value of them, debateable, but uh, once the department head budgets come in, I think really that's where we start taking off as early as possible. Which we do every year, but regardless of where we do it, as soon as they're in, I think it's time to get to work.
Yeah. I don't know, Tim, is, is uh, the June meeting too early to ask? I mean, if they know it's coming, I mean, we've been talking about it all year already, so it's not like there's any surprises here. Uh, to say that the June council meeting is when we expect that budget for twenty twenty-six to be ready?
That's like in, what, three weeks?
Yeah, no.
So.
I don't think it's realistic to be perfectly, you know. July, the July council would be more realistic. And that gives you August, September, October to do your work.
Okay.
You know, cause in, in two, you know, that early in the process, you know, we don't have a lot of our numbers from the revenue side and things like that. But I mean, it, just cause we don't have a complete picture yet, doesn't mean you can't start looking at department budgets. But I, I would say, yeah, the July.
July council meeting?
Would be for department head budgets. No, those are just the budgets. It wouldn't be the complete budget document at that point. I mean, I could do some estimating of some stuff, but we can, I could work on it.
But at that point in time, they'd have a pretty good idea what they're gonna be asking for in twenty twenty-six. We want that already. That should, they should have some vision.
Right. I always, I always preach to them that budget's three hundred and sixty-five days a year. You should always be thinking about as you're going through the year. As stuff comes up, you know, how is it, you know, something that I have to account for in my next year's budget or this year's budget, so. But I think the July council would be more realistic for getting department heads to compile a budget. Cause the problem is to, you know, if we're talking in three weeks, right? You know, you don't want them to rush through and just put something together that they haven't thought through and, you know, and I think, I know some of the departments, you know, solicit input from members within their department too, so July would be better.
Okay.
Chief?
Thanks. Yeah, I'm just looking at, um, you know, previous agenda items here and Tim's analysis of that halfway point or that second quarter. And I think it's probably important, or at least from my perspective, to look at the health of, of your department to be able to put together something, um, for that next uh, year. At least when you have two quarters in and you can kinda see the health of each budget where you're analyzing, um, your vision for that next one. So i- if I would, um, request, I would say, um, after that second quarter would be in, at least you'd be able to tell that halfway point. And like Tim said, there's a lot more meat to the discussion at that second quarter than the first year, so.
Thank you. So July. Alright, everybody's good with that? Alright.
Alright, item seven, adjournment. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Hey, ten. Eight, ten. Thank you, everyone.